Okay.
Something should happen.
Yeah, okay.
To call the meeting to order, please? Um, uh, if you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And we'll, uh, next, let me. Commissioners are present. Um, our board norms, debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Um, and if I could, uh, have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? And the motion carries. And if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, and now we have public input, and we have Assistant Superintendent Robles.
Me. I apologize for jumping on public input. I told Kevin there was one true way to get a chance to. I, um, I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, let you and the community know that the Rutland Initiative Student Exchange delegation from Hanamaki is going to ride in Rutland on October 27th. And in front of you, I put a little piece of information about a community night that we're going to have on November 1st of that following week, where we hope anybody who's interested to see a little bit about what Hanamaki life is like, have some food, see some slides from the trip to Japan, and also meet our guests. Uh, anybody who's interested is welcome to come, and I wanted to extend an invitation all to you and, uh, and to the community as well, and, um, just hope we have a good turnout and people get to see our, our new friends. They're wonderful folks. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
Uh, and next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Mr. Norm Cohen and Mr. Al Wakefield. Um, at the behest of Commissioner Alderwoman Anna Tadio and Alderman Joe Barbogallo. Anna and Anna and Joe emailed me over the summer and, uh, said that they had, that the city has adopted the Declaration of Inclusion, and asked if we would consider doing the same. So we gave, uh, Norm a call. Uh, Norm and Bob Harnish came into the Policy Committee, and, um, here they are tonight to speak to everyone. So, uh, Norm brought a handout, which is the actual Declaration of Inclusion. So if you'd like, you could step up to the table. If you'd like, have a seat or stand, however, you're more comfortable. Did you wanna, sure, yes, please.
I'll start off, then I guess, as you said, I'm Joe Barbogallo, and I'm from the Board of Aldermen, and I serve as sort of liaison between the school board and the Board of Aldermen. And I'm just here tonight because we are talking about the Declaration of Inclusion. Uh, the Board of Aldermen has adopted the Declaration of Inclusion. A copy of it is on the city website so that anybody can see it. It is public knowledge out there. Uh, as Aldermen, we understand you are an independent body, and you are free to make your own decision, what you would like to do with this. You can either accept it the way it is, you can change it, you can do whatever you like with it. We have no problems whatsoever. You're an independent board, and we are perfectly comfortable with that. So, uh, I'll pretty much leave it there and turn it over to you, Norm.
Well, thank you, Joe. Uh, thank you, Kathy, and everyone else for having us here. Uh, I'm Norman Cohen. I'm a member of the Declaration of Inclusion Initiative. With me is Al Wakefield, one of the founders of the declaration. And we appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you, give you some of the background, some of the benefits of having it, which we hope you recognize. There are a lot of people here, Kathy, that didn't get a copy. Would you like me to read it for their benefit?
Uh, sure, yeah. Oh, I, I think we did send it around. We did send it around, so it's gone around, but if you'd like to read it. Oh, in the back.
Public.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Let me do that. I'm gonna face them. I think it'll be easy. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Norman Cohen. This is Al Wakefield of the Declaration of Inclusion Initiative. And, um, I will read it to you. The City of Rutland School Board condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, age, disability, socioeconomic status, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a school board, we formally condemn all discrimination in all of its forms. And commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our, in our district. And will strive to ensure all of our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The Rutland City School Board has and will continue to be a place where all individuals can live freely and express their opinions.
I'm surprised Norman doesn't know that's a hard.
Well, three of us are over 80. Including my buddy. We've had good luck with this. We, there are, so far, 126 towns in the state of Vermont, two cities, municipalities, uh, that have adopted it. Um, it started in the town of Franklin, and it spread quickly to Rutland County because the Chair of the Select Board of Franklin was friends, was cousin of Bob Harnish, who used to own what the Cortina Inn up on Route 4, uh, before it was sold. And, um, Bob took it to Pittsburgh, then he visited, which, where he lives, was adopted by Pittsburgh. Brandon picked it up, adopted it, and then Al got in touch, but Bob got in touch with Al. They started planning, thinking that had some future potential and advantage for the state. And I ran into Al downtown one day, and he told me about it, and I said, can I jump on the bandwagon? And he said, yes. And then recently Barbara Pulling from the Regional Planning Commission joined us in her private capacity, not as a member there, and she's been a tremendous assistant. So there's four of us pounding on doors, sending letters, emails, phone calls to every municipality in the state. And we just welcomed the opportunity here. The 126 towns that have adopted the declaration, uh, have a population of over 460,000 people. That's 71.7% of the population of Vermont, uh, lives in towns which have adopted the declaration. We have some very, very helpful partners. The Vermont Chamber of Commerce, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, the Social Equity Caucus of Vermont Legislature, the Vermont Council on Rural Development, and the Rutland Area NAACP Chapter, among others. The Vermont Futures, uh, which is a branch of Chamber of Commerce, has done some research, and they have a website. I think you'll find some of it very interesting. They said that 67%, some of the things they found in the research since we started, was that 67% of the population growth from 2010 to 2020 occurred in towns that have adopted the declaration. 50% of the counties in Vermont, uh, have over 50% of the towns which have adopted the declaration. And 66% of the housing units in Vermont are in the 125 towns that have done it. And they will continue this research. One of the striking things that came to our attention along the way was that about two years ago CNBC did a very extensive survey on determining what state in the nation was the best state to live in. And turned out it was Vermont, which I knew in 1969 when I came here. And, but it found one shortcoming, and that is diversity. That we are the second widest state in the country and the second oldest state in the country. We need people. We need to be welcoming. We need to tell people to come. No matter what their background is, no matter what they look like, if you have talent, we have a place for you, and you will feel that you're welcome and that you belong here. And that's, that's really the, sort of the factual basis that we go on. And, um, uh, Al's, I'm gonna give it to Al, who's been in, been very involved and very helpful, and, uh, he'll pick it up from there, and if he leaves something out, I'll fill in at the end.
He always does.
And you always do.
Yeah, exactly right. Exactly. That's our roles. Uh, we each have a role on the, on this little group for, couldn't get to 120. Actually, probably visited in one way or another, something like 130 towns or so, but 120. 126 have adopted, a couple have adopted and rescinded, and then a couple voted, uh, voted no for reasons we, uh, they had not explained to us, but that, that's just the way, you can't expect 100%. We're reaching towards 247. That's our number. That's our goal. That's our vision, that, that Vermont will become known as, in fact, be the, uh, the best state for inclusion in the country. That's our vision. That's what we're working on. Uh, now, two years or so. It's been a, it's been a heck of a ride, you know? For me, it's, it's really very rewarding, because this, of all that we've done, this is only the second or third time that, uh, in fact, we've been before a live audience. All of this work has been done via Zoom, the telephone calls, the meetings, et cetera, et cetera. They've all been done with select boards and city councils, et cetera, uh, via Zoom. So it's a pleasure to see live faces. As such, it's almost a little bit nerve-wracking, actually. But, um.
Not for lawyers.
But it's ranged from, you know, a place like Rutland and Montpelier, South Burlington, to Holland, where we were last night, and Versure, I think, where I'm gonna be after I leave here with, uh, with Bob Holland, and each meeting has been different. But it's a pleasure to be home. Uh, I've been here now, uh, almost 40 years or so. It doesn't seem like it, so, but I came here from New York City, ran an executive search firm, uh, doing work around the world out of New York, and, uh, came here, gave all that up through one of my midlife crises, and bought a restaurant, a gourmet food market. But I bought that from another black man, in fact, who'd been invited to Rutland, Ernie Royal. And some of the people in this audience will remember Ross Harside, which at one point was one of the best restaurants in the country. I think a Michelin, uh, one-star, one-star restaurant, yeah, out of three, which is a big deal in, in the food service business. In any event, I bought that from him and managed to, uh, take it someplace it had never been before, and, uh, sold it after a year. I had no business being in the food service business. Went back into something I knew something about. Long story short, um, uh, I was invited here by, by Ernie, uh, and a guy named, uh, Punderson, uh, who ran a, Jack, Frank, Frank Punderson, who ran a, uh, a real estate business here, very successful real estate business, and, uh, from Killington. Uh, the starter, uh, originator of Killington, said, come on to Rutland, come on to Vermont, and you will find your joy here. I've been here now almost 40 years, and yeah, I've had a lot of joy here, both, uh, running a restaurant and a gourmet food market, and then, uh, doing executive search around the world. So we brought something here, I think. Vermont is in need of people. Uh, the governor said it, uh, when he adopted the proclamation for the state. He said it in several State of the, of the State messages. Uh, he's paid $10,000 to some individuals to come here. Uh, I don't think you have to pay $10,000 to come. I think if we, uh, if we establish the fact that, in fact, we are a welcoming place that is a safe environment for people to come, bring their families, uh, realize whatever their joys are, that in fact, we can save a lot of money. Return on that kind of investment is pretty damn good. And so, uh, that's what we're working towards, and we come here because, thanks, uh, to the Board of Aldermen for, uh, early on adopting, uh, 12 out of 12. That was a wonderful, wonderful thing. And, uh, now we're asking you to follow on, uh, uh, doing what the, uh, what the Board of Aldermen did. Uh, it'll say something to the students, I think, here. Uh, it'll say something to the town. Uh, it'll show a united front. Uh, this town is open, uh, and welcoming, uh, helping to neutralize some of the negative, uh, uh, reputation that, that Rutland has. So, um, that's enough words, probably. Um, we'll turn it back over to you, unless Norman, who normally has something to say anyway, may well say something, but maybe not. Okay. So it's back on your, it's back on your doze. Thank you so much for having us here. We appreciate it.
The only thing I'd like to add.
I told you he's gonna say something.
With your permission. As if I need, anyways, um, this goes on all the time. The governor issued, just to share your information, is the governor has issued a proclamation of inclusion, which is on our website, and basically states what we've tried to restate here. Uh, I urge you to read it. It's very well phrased. And subsequent to that, he has established three consecutive years, and we assume it will continue, the second week in May as Inclusion Week for the whole state. And in that, a number of towns have had, you know, wonderful activities to highlight it, and some very small towns, some medium towns. Milton comes to mind. Their, um, town manager is extremely, uh, involved in, in inclusion matters, and, um, it's, it's gaining traction. So I think with that, we'll answer any questions you may have.
I have a couple of questions. First one, you said 126 towns have adopted it. How many school districts?
I'm sorry?
You said 126 towns have adopted this. How many schools?
How many school districts? One school district.
What school district?
And based on, right? You know, our, I believe this is political, and in our board norms, we don't talk about, you know, we're not supposed to have politics, and this is the fact that it's one school in 126 towns, to me, it's politics.
I don't, I'm, I'm not sure.
Is there a question?
I'm not sure.
I'm more of a statement.
We have not focused on school districts, uh, uh, you know, quite honestly, yeah. Uh, you'll see on the list that Norm puts together when we, uh, when we take on a new town. Uh, you'll see all kinds of organizations on there. For instance, the Queechee Golf Course, uh, the Vermont Psychological Association. There are several other organizations like that, which have seen the value of participating in this, uh, joining with this initiative. And so we've not gone to school districts. That's not been our target. There are four of us.
All of us.
Our targets have been municipalities, period. And anything else is of added value, and I think what that does enhances, uh, what this initiative is intended to do.
I'll send
Oh, sorry.
You the list of the towns and the organizations that support it. It's on our website, but I'll send it to you.
Okay, great. And I'll send it to the, to the board.
Uh, not really so much of a question, but, um, just, inclusion shouldn't really be a political issue. That's just pretty, I feel like that's pretty basic.
Yes, I have a hard time with one of these three people. I'm not gonna say which one. When I was being elected, was actually saying negative and racist things against me.
Stephanie, this isn't, this isn't the form for that.
They're sitting here.
The forum for that.
They're talking politics, and they're sitting up here telling us we need to sign something.
We're listening, we're no one's, it's a presentation. It's not an action item.
I understand that.
Just a presentation. I think Tricia's here, Tricia.
I was actually li- listening to this very openly, so I just wanted to clarify. Um, I started to not feel it was as open when we started talking black versus white, because I do feel like that creates the divide. Uh, when I'm hearing discrimination, I was trying to be open from the aspect of discrimination, meaning black, white, Asian, any kind of different nationality. But also, when I think discrimination, I think able-bodied, um, people that are not able-bodied. Discrimination does not have to be race-based. It can be physically based. There's a lot of children that maybe have special needs, um, that feel discriminated against every day going to school, because maybe they have Asperger's, or they have something that sets them apart from others. So I was feeling, um, like I, I really was trying to listen to this openly, but when it became the black versus white, um, that's where I kind of lost my interest.
We're not aware that that, in fact, is so. I, I don't know where it's become black versus white. If you read, if you read the Declaration itself, it includes, in fact, uh, age, disability, et cetera. That, do you have a copy of the Declaration?
Somebody up here had just mentioned the black versus white. Did other people hear this?
It wasn't us.
It wasn't us.
Lady of Bear might have, but we haven't said anything about it.
I think they.
Race is mentioned, and unfortunately, people focus on race, but there are nine to 10 different, uh, categories, marginalized groups that are traditionally marginalized, that are generally accepted across the country, not just, not just with us.
But.
So it's not, it, 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 race is in there, because that's one of, one of the marginalized groups, but we don't talk race, even though I happen to be black.
We, but we had, somebody had mentioned something about the influx of the population getting more diversity in the state of Vermont. So in fact, that was implied through that statement, so I know I did not mishear that, but it was implied. Granted, it could be, I could have assumed black versus white, but with this statement like that, that is how I took it, was to increase the influx of the population.
Yeah.
So just to be clear.
It's not our goal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Will say.
One thing I might mention is that if you need to tinker with the language to eliminate those kind of suggestions, you're free to do it. We'd like, we'd like everybody to pass it the way we voted, but, and most of the towns have, but every now and then, somebody feels strongly about one thing or another, and they have, oh, added, and you certainly are welcome to, to do that kind of editing, tinkering, improving.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't use the word tinkering. I think, I think towns that have amended this, revised it, have given a lot of thought to it.
Yeah.
And in, in just about every town, uh, no, no town, in fact, has taken anything away from it. Most of the towns that have done anything to it have added to it. South Burlington has an admirable declaration. Uh, the town of Milton has an admirable, uh, declaration. There's, there's Essex, uh, uh, far, going far beyond what we've asked them to do. The governor went far beyond what we asked him to. We just asked him if he would, in fact, uh, back a Declaration of Inclusion Initiative. They developed a proclamation which is far beyond what we asked them to do. So if you change it, that's fine. It reflects your caring. It reflects your involvement in the whole process. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that. Uh, so feel, feel free to do that, amend it, uh, but I make the same once again. Nobody's taking anything out of it. They put more into it. And I think that's a good thing.
I just, I really appreciate you guys being here, and I've been following what you've been doing, and I really appreciate all the work that has been put into this. And to the, um, idea of presenting it to a school board or a school district, to me, um, I just want to reread the beginning of it, where it says, um, you put in the blank where you can say, "This entity condemns racism, welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity, and expression, age, ability, or socioeconomic status, and we want everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community." Now, to me, what that says coming from a school board would be, um, right in line with how we're trying to stop bullying and how we're trying to teach children how to treat each other. And that, nothing about that is political or divisive. That's just teaching students how to treat other students and go out in the world and become better humans to treat other humans better. So I really appreciate you presenting this to us, and, um, I do think that it's something that is, um, ooh, my word went away. It's something that very well is called a school, um, community, because it's all about humans treating themselves better. I just appreciate the wording, and I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
May I? Can I make a statement?
Of course.
Yeah. I had mentioned this at, I believe it was the Political Committee when we met the first time. I am an usher.
The policy.
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 Sorry, pardon me. Uh, I'm an usher down at St. Peter's Church here in Brooklyn, down on Convent Avenue. And for years, like many churches in Vermont, all you saw was white people in there. Now, we are becoming very diversified. We're finding more black people. We're finding Filipinos. We're finding Asians. We're finding people of every nationality coming to our church. And these are young families, and these young families have kids, and those kids are going to our schools. So this is one reason why we need to see something like this.
I think, oh. Well, Heather, 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 yes. I haven't quite been following this, but I have heard of it. Um, and I saw on the news a while back how a town had voted to resend, um, adopting it, and I was curious. They didn't state why. Um, and I know it doesn't really matter, but after, and they didn't read the whole document, um, for the news thing, so I had no idea what it was all about. Um, so reading this and hearing the presentation, I 100% support, I'm all about inclusion, our whole family, you know? My kids don't see, they just see humans, you know, and that's what it's all about, and it's supporting, you know, all are welcome, all are 100% inclusivity, no matter all of this. Um, but my thought process goes to, why do we need a declaration for that? Wh- why do we need to vote in a document that should just be what we are teaching? There shouldn't need to be a document that is, you know, why can't that just be how it is?
Well, we've, we've heard that question before. You know, half a dozen times, maybe, in one form or another. And the answer is that this is a public expression. This promotes what you are and what you stand for and what you are trying to pass on. And, you know, as companies move in, as our local companies are advertising nationwide for people, uh, to come here, people of various hours state want to come to Vermont because they skied here, or want to come and start a different living, uh, way of living, life, and they look to websites. Now, my generation doesn't do it as, as well, or as often. I turn on a computer. It's a major triumph. But, you know, people in their 30s to 50s, or when we locate, look to websites. And it's on the City of Rutland's website, if it's on the school board's website, they're looking for that.
So when I'm, oh, I didn't mean to interrupt him, sorry.
They're looking for it, particularly if they're from some minority or marginalized group or whatever. So it's, it's, it's important in, in that way, and it, it tells the community, it tells the people of our state what you are and what, and if the school board has it, and, and the city has it, um, you know, it just say, it makes a statement, an affirmative statement. And, um, we believe that's appropriate, and it's helpful to the community.
So what I'm hearing is, which, I mean, don't, I support all of these things, 100%, and I love going through the schools and seeing all of the inclusivity and the supporting each other and, and building up, you know, regardless of race, color, sexuality, how people identify, um, and personally, having kids in four of our five schools, six schools. Um, it's heartwarming to see how well our school district does, in my opinion, of, um, just embodying this as a vibe and a presence and putting it forward. My feeling, though, is having a declaration is just advertisement. Really? So, okay.
Well, it, advertisement is, is, Dave Vogelby said, "There's no such thing as bad advertising," but that that having, that having been said, uh, there is an implementation piece to this, and so, uh, if you go through our, our website, it talks about adoption, and it talks about implementation, and, uh, the gentleman here mentioned, uh, that the statement is on the door of City Hall. Uh, we've got. Uh, we've got it in Menden, uh, sitting on our desk and a number of towns have, you know, done similar things. Uh, putting, uh, the decoration on your, your vendor proposal. So all you, this town's getting, you gotta have loads and loads of people behind the service and letting them know in fact that you're welcoming. Uh, proposals from all, yeah, all the individuals we identify. Uh, so that is advocacy. There, there is an implementation piece which is, it is pretty significant, uh, for the most part in Bucky. You know, no cost, although there also money is available to Vermont foundation where, uh, there in fact there. Uh, there is something, but I, I guess what I want to say from a, from a personal standpoint, I mentioned I've been here forty years or so. And I was invited to, to come here, although I'd made my decision and talking to Press Smith and, and the others just kind of reinforced it. Uh, but after I got here and bought the restaurant, some people in the audience may remember it. Uh, by then, once I bought the restaurant, the gourmet food market and. I, in New York City, I've been involved with the police department as a result of my executive responsibilities at Avon. And, uh, we welcomed the police department in for dinner, fire department and for dinner, lunches, our whole families at Thanksgiving. I did the same thing here and, uh, uh, some, some folks saw I was trying to buy the, uh, buy the police department. So we got some negative publicity out of that. Uh, we survived it. Um, when I decided I wanted to be buried in, uh, Cemetery over in Plymouth. Uh, the funeral, not funeral director, but the cemetery director said, let me show you this plot of land over here. And he carried me over and long story short, uh, the guy that was buried, that buried, that was a black guy. And he thought I might like to be buried next to another black fellow. I mean, that's, that's lightweight stuff, uh, and, and, you know, you can experience that. People who've got disabilities, as, as someone mentioned, uh, they experience this kind of stuff every, every day. And it's subtle, you'll never know it, you'll never hear about it, but it's the kind of thing that turns people off. We need to come back to the fact that we need people in the state, we need, uh, uh, if we don't draw from a diverse population of people. We are going to suffer. I just heard on the radio, uh, I forget the name of the company, it's a high-tech company. That's gonna have a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet, three football fields. And they've got to find people from someplace to, to, to people that think, would you will, it's about, I almost said, man. People.
I wouldn't let them.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, they, they aren't gonna develop magic and so Burlington in, in developing that high-tech, you know, facility is going to be in competition. Or somebody's doing the same thing in Ohio and California, uh, across, across states. So we've got to continue to distinguish ourselves, being something green for other than trees. We need to be green for people, you know, ripe environment, people feel comfortable coming here of all races, of all sexes. Of all kinds of disabilities, veterans, uh, socio-econ, socioeconomic states, et cetera.
Yeah, and, and by adopting this, you know, you put it out there. People aren't gonna know what you like, what you're like. I, I know what, what you're saying. Is that this is a fair-minded group of people and wouldn't step on anybody's turf, and I understand that, but the public doesn't know it.
A couple of things. One, I know that, uh, this was before policy committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and was any action taken by policy?
We didn't have enough people there.
And second of all, is there emotion on the floor? I mean, I think we need to move this along. Not that it's not an important topic, but we just have a lot of people who have spent a very long day around the building. That might like to get out a little early or on time.
So the, the thought is, is that we're just here to listen and get information, ask our questions and think about it. And it will be on the agenda at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
That's the thought.
Okay.
I have one more small question.
Is it a really a question?
Yes, it's really a question.
Thank you.
What's the one school district that has, um, what's, what's the one school that has adopted this?
It's the, uh, news have to have, it was the one district, it's the. Mount of Scutney School District.
My gosh, I didn't know that is a district.
Yes, that's the one, that's the one.
And I, just to follow up with that one, so I was just looking at our mission statement between our mission statement and I believe our new portrait of a graduate that we recently adopted. How is this inclusion really different from those two things, which combined all of this, what, the two different documents? Is it just to say that we have the inclusion?
This question for us.
Yeah, they probably don't know that. Phil would like to.
Well, I don't, I don't know if they know what our portrait of a graduate is, so if I could answer it for you. I, I want to thank you for coming, appreciate your presentation. Thanks for giving us time to think about this. Oh, sorry, I, I gotta speak up. I need to speak up. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
He was really mad right now.
Norm, I will not let you down.
He's one of the people we're talking about. He heard that, yeah.
Uh, but when I, when I read this, I think this is everything that we have to do legally. We should be doing this morally, we should be doing it ethically, and this is what a school should be doing. And we are trying to create a, a feeling of belonging for our kids and our families. We have a very diverse group of kids and families in the district as, as you were mentioning, mentioning, Joe. So the question about, we, we have a, a policy that relates to this in more detail. We have practices, we, we, we're doing a lot of this, but I think when, when you think about the board setting the vision for what the district should become. The, if you look up there, the board set the, the vision for our portrait of a graduate, what we want our kids to become. I think this is the same, this would be the same step. I would urge the board to consider it. Because what we're really trying to do is say, this is what we believe in, that's what we believe in. And we want all our kids to feel like they belong, we want our staff to feel like they belong. We want these new families that have come into the city to stay here and contribute. So, I, I, I love what, how you've written this, it's really nice and clear and simple. There's not, I don't, I can't argue with anything there. So I, I think we should be, I, I feel like the board should be making that statement, yes, we, we believe in this. Let's set a, a vision for the rest of the school districts in the state.
Uh, yeah. Student reps, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I did wanna say, you know, I think this is a very valuable thing for a lot of students. Especially, um, those who are considering leaving the state, um, to pursue a career. You know, find other things out there. I know something that's, you know, become kind of commonplace, especially with my age group. Is that kids want to go elsewhere because there's not as many opportunities and not as much here for us to do or pursue in. And so I think fostering some of these inclusive ideas early in our schools. Is valuable in fostering it later on in life, in adults and having that further sense that Vermont can be something. Bigger, more inclusive, more diverse, and there's more opportunities for kids our age. Who are looking, you know, for a more expansive future.
And not just kids, like adults too, because I've encountered some who don't specifically agree with everything on this list. And it's very limiting to some people learning in that environment, not wanting to show up because of these specific. Um, feelings they have towards this adult that's supposed to be their role model. And I think this just embodies what we should take on as adults and kids.
Thank you, thank you.
Great to see you kids. Great to see you there, yeah.
Margaret, um, I just wanted to thank you guys for coming. I know that this is a lot of time to come to our policy committee meeting. As well as to come, sorry, uh, Norm, I'm so sorry, I never talk softly. I've been coaching all afternoon, I'm trying.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna use my coaching voice then, um. And I don't have COVID, I'm sorry, I just got at the tail end of a crappy flu thing, but, uh, which I'm not contagious anymore, I'm so sorry. Uh, anyway, so, uh, you know, I think, like, I, I just wanna thank you for, for spending so much time with us. Cause you did come to policy and we're grateful that you came to policy and that you're, you're here now. So thank you for that. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, uh, I'm not gonna tokenize myself. And speak for all lesbians, I'm not gonna do that, but as a member of a marginalized community. Um, I know I, I've shared this with, with you all when we met this summer that when I did my national job search. When I lived in Albuquerque, New Mexico and landed here and applied to Green Mountain College as the athletic director. Anywhere I could find inclusion mattered to me. It matters. And so, um, if I had kids, it would have mattered and if I lived in Poltonia or I lived in Rutland, it, it would have mattered to me. Um, Green Mountain is, was, no longer exists, was an extremely welcoming and inclusive community. And so, um, uh, it, it, it got me here. So, you know, I, I, I think that's, again, just an anecdotal bit of evidence. Um, but as somebody who, who does also teach about diversity leadership. You know me, I'm the higher ed nerd, I got lots of other really great research to, uh, to support it as well, um.
This is the scutney question.
Exactly.
This is a long, not question.
Okay, um, I'm not sure everybody else had a, had a question either, so.
We did. Are there more questions?
I think that she's just thanking them to be here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, as I was saying, I, you know, I, I, I think if you, if you need any, um. Research that I might be able to provide to help you, I, I could certainly do that in the research that I do for my.
Thank you.
Nine to five job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and, and all the time you spent with us.
Certainly, if you need to, that's the next meeting, uh, one of us or all four of us, please.
I just noticed your website, I don't see that anywhere, so what's your website?
BT Declaration of Inclusion dot org, in all in lowercase, all written together. BT Declaration of Inclusion dot org. Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Dot org. So, since it's not. Okay, moving on to, um, student reps reports.
Uh, Rutland Middle School is having huge success with our rewards-based school store. So far this year, we have awarded twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy points to our student body. We award points for our s- school-wide expectations of integrity, respect, responsibility and collaboration. Our areas of biggest success have been respect and responsibility, where we have awarded seven thousand two hundred and forty-five and ten thousand points respectively. We are getting ready for our first evacuation drill next week. We are looking forward to this learning opportunity. Our unified arts department has been working hard to organize a fall festival for our students. It will start with a spirit week on October twenty-third and ends with a pep rally on October twenty-seventh. Our students are looking forward to it. At Stafford, the president and CEO of Project Lead the Way, Dave Dimmitt, visited Stafford's engineering program as well. As part of his tour of Northern New England schools. Stafford's program was recommended to him as an exemplar program in the United States. And he, along with his chief impact officer, visited to learn how Stafford is implementing the Project Lead the Way curriculum. And how it may be replicated around the country. The group spent two hours immersed with the students and instructors, and it was a great experience for our students in Stafford Lake. Last week, we held our annual program advisory committee breakfast and meeting. We were excited to have over a hundred businesses represented and had a great conversation about making the work keys assessment. That all Vermont CTE students are required to take, used as a gauge for career readiness in industry. So that it has more meaning to our students than just another standardized test. Many employers were excited about this conversation as they felt it would perhaps help them hire and retain better employees. The high school was pleased to host Spirit Week in homecoming. Each day of the week was a different theme such as sports jerseys or pajamas. We held a pep rally on Friday and the weekend was filled with home games for students. The week was capped off with the homecoming dance, which was very well attended. Last week, RHS welcomed over two hundred parents to parent-teacher conferences. There were a total of seven hundred and sixty-six appointments discussing two hundred and twenty students.
RIS has had opt, uh, busy October and we, they are just getting started. We had a hugely successful turnout for parent-teacher conferences last week. Oliver Subaru of Rutland in partnership of Subaru Loves Learning donated over three thousand in school supplies for s- six teachers. Who generously shared with their teaching teams. We are proud to announce our very own Ed Dutton has been nominated for UVM Teacher of the Year. Ed is a phenomenal math teacher who focuses on building relationships so students not only want to learn in his class, they thrive. Ed and Carrie will be attending the ceremony honoring all the nominees on November fourteenth at UVM. We are wrapping up our first two PTO fundraisers. Our sch- scholastic book fair and chocolate sales, all the while looking forward to Family Harvest Dance this Friday. October thirteenth, from six to seven thirty. Students must attend with an adult. Admission is free and facts will be available for purchase. We will end the month with a spirit week to celebrate red ribbon, ribbon, ribbon week and a Halloween parade around the school on October thirty-first. We would lo- like to thank everyone for their support with all these events. Students at Northeast are spending the month of October practicing and finding examples of our monthly pause character trait mindfulness. We reinforce these skills through our counselors, school, social skills lessons and our school-wide announcements. Students use breathing balls, communication, thoughts and feelings through the zones of regulation and community circles. And you de- utilize movement breaks to help with emotional regulation. Attending, attending with body and mind is a school-wide expectation. Our first second and second graders had a wonderful time at Come Alive Outside's Fall Fun Day at RRRC. And our kindergartners enjoyed visit, visiting Mendon Orchard for some festive apple picking. This month's second grade students are looking forward to their little city tour of local highlights like the fire department and the library. And our entire school is looking forward to our fall festival and Halloween parade happening later in the month. We had a wonderful time hosting families for open house in September and meeting with our students and families at last week's parent-teacher conferences. Our parent-teacher collaboratives, collaboratives is planning an upcoming grocery bingo and a make it take it craft night. Clo- closer to the holidays, join us for virtual PTC meetings on the first Tuesday of each month. Our next meeting is November seventh. This month at Northwest, school students are working on the character trait of self-control. We make good choices by practicing stop, think and make a good choice. This also encompasses our portion of a graduate trait of critical thinking. We are starting to visit our local community with kindergarten students going to the fire department and second grade visiting the city. Ms. Clody is also excited to announce the new RCPS learning lounge on PEG TV. Each month we will highlight one of our many great events in Rutland City Public Schools. For the month of September, we learned a little more about our new administrators. Justine Roland, Roland, Rob Becker and Lindsay Ryder. Please tune in to see the interviews that are now airing on PEG TV, or they can be streamed online. At the, at the end of the month, we will have our annual Halloween parade at Northwest. We are excited to have a staff theme once again. The parade will be on October thirty-first at two fifteen if you would like to swing by the Northwest play, playground.
Thank you. Any questions for our student reps?
Uh, I just wanna add, I've been supporting the candy bar sales. Shut down every game and I tell those in cash.
Bill, I think you're up.
Thanks, I'm just gonna riff off of what they said. I, I, hold on, I wanna say the, the guy, the CEO who came from Project Lead the Way. It's a national curriculum for engineering across the country. He came to visit, uh, Stafford just to see what they were doing and it was pretty amazing today. There, there was a great visit for him. He got to see, talk to all the different kids in the, in the, in the classroom, they showed them the projects they were working on. Some of the guys were doing some robotics work, got to see that in action. And so you had a probably, I don't know, it looked like about twenty-five to thirty kids all working on different projects and he toured around and he was really impressive. Kathy just happened to be there on a, on a different mission, she saw it in action too. So that was a great visit for Stafford to have the, the president of this company come to, come to see it in action and, and learn from us. It was great. So I just wanted to mention that. I wanted to, uh, congratulate, uh, RHS senior Ivan Mokeev. He is a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship Program. So he's one of a number of academics, academically talented seniors across the country. He now will apply to, uh, to earn the scholarship. There are seven, seven thousand national scholarships out there, National Merit Scholarships. So it's a very competitive process, just to get to this level is a real compliment for his, his great efforts. It's pretty hard to get to, to this level, so he's, he's in the mix for the next level and we wish him luck. I too wanted to thank parents for coming to open house the other night, uh not open house, uh parent teacher conferences. We had a large number of people come join us and meet with their teachers, help us help establish communication and make sure both school and families are understanding how we can better help our kids reach reach the portrait of a graduate. So thank you for coming. We appreciate the time that you put into that. You mentioned also that we have relocation drills happening this week, so I think, did you have yours today, Kristy? Oh, next week, sorry. Uh they they all they're all are starting up over the next few days, and this is part of our um options-based response protocol. And so we have the obligation to let let uh families know that this is happening, so it's happening. Uh but this is our another way we'd make sure we we are ready in case we have some kind of an emergency and we have to help kids get to a safer spot. So it's just just a practice, a good drill that we do every year. Um, and that's happening this over the next few days. I want to remind the board that uh Pam Reed and the screening committee are are working right now. They've they've already started the process of filling the shoes of Assistant Superintendent Robles in in that new that role that's opening up. That started last week, and we hope to have a a recommendation for a name for you for you to consider at the next board meeting. So we'll have a a pretty tight timeline, but that that'll be coming to you next next board meeting. And just a little summary, we had our strategic plan first meeting the other day. Uh that that was in sit- actually, it wasn't the other day, it was September twentieth, so it's a little 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 bit ago. Um, we're just to remind the community, we're working with the national organization Patel for Kids. Uh, they've helped us with our Portrait of a Graduate process, where the board set the vision for what we want our kids to become over their time at Rutland City Schools. And now we're working on the planning process. How do we get there? So that work uh involved the creation of what's called a design team. We had about ninety people attend. Thank you for the board members who were able to be there, and we had um family members, um staff members, community leaders, and parents, and um students. Uh we had so we we had a very large group. It was it was really interesting to see the process. In that process in September, we went through a consideration of what we think or what each individual thought the strengths of the district were, what the weaknesses are, what the opportunities are, and what the threats of this district might be. And so we're taking that what's called a squad analysis, and we're trying to pull all that together and and get a common understanding of of what our strengths and weaknesses are and where we where we need to go next. So our next meeting is next week, and what we're going to do is take that information, kind of condense it, make sense of it, and we're going to take data from uh the district, and we're also going to use data from the equity review that we did in s- in the spring. And from there, we're going to try to develop what they call prioritized targets, the the targets that we're shooting for in our strategic plan. We'll get those targets and then we'll hand it off to what's called a writing team, and that's a smaller group of people who will do the writing for this strategic plan. And that will take place over six weeks, and then we meet again in December. Um, so we we asked the board to please attend if you can be there. The next meeting is next Thursday, October nineteenth. Ted's getting ready to correct me, four o'clock ten uh at the Rutland High School Theater. I think that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. And we now have Marie Gilman with a Tapestry Epic Program update.
Everything is on, so.
You're there. I just wanted to ask. I have props. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. Um Marie Gilman, I'm the Executive Director of Tapestry and Epic After School and Summer Programs. I just wanted to share with you some updates, some highlights, and um maybe offer some refresh for folks that have heard from me before. I guess at this point, you all have for the most part, and introduction to our programs. Give me that, so. Okay, by the way, October is Celebrate After School Month, and we have our National After School Alliance that works with us all to celebrate and highlight the importance of after-school programs. And um see again later, the Thursday, October twenty-sixth is the official day for Lights On After School. So our programs always do something special that day, and they are again this year, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, so why? We skipped. Just in general, to I I've talked a lot about our programs and why I feel they're important, but reminder and slide coming up about and let's see, in particular, and the expectations there, but we really are here to make sure that we are offering opportunities for kids and youth to experience learning in addition to what they learn during the school day, complement that somehow. Um, we've done that and worked closely with Portrait of a Graduate, and we're working with the strategic planning process, which I wholeheartedly believe in and have participated in with many organizations over the years. Um, we really want to help set the stage for students to reach their full potential. Um, I love this quote, so I included it here just since a little image, but you never know how hazing somebody can be until you give them a chance. And that means giving several chances sometimes, trying different things. Um, that's part of how we build individual character as individuals, as a community, and working with the students that we work with. I'm not going to read all of these, but I want to highlight a couple, because these are the new Vermont State by Twenty-One C goals. As we know, both of our programs are funded in part um at least by Twenty-First Secretary's Community Learning Funding from the federal government. And some of the primary objectives there, you'll see number one, to serve youth who have limited opportunities to learn outside of the school day. That is really important in this community and a very big part of the reason that we exist. So we take full advantage of that. Um, we want to provide those diverse opportunities for learning. We want to make sure that we are giving those experiences, as I've already said. We collect a lot of data. We track and monitor a lot of data. I'm actually working on that right now. Our federal reports are all due at the end of this month. So I'll have more data to share with you next time beyond what I'm going to share tonight. Um, we also want to make sure that the programs are run in a way that they will be sustainable, that they are efficient and strong. So one of the things is our staff. We heard me talk about um the need for more. We still need more. Um, I know it's hard in this universe, but we're still out there trying to recruit and attract with this. In terms of importance, and I want to point out, this is from summer, this is like the middle school epic kids, and they were on one of their field trips from their self-designed summer program focused on history. And they were all smiling and having a fabulous time on this particular day. So what do we learn? By participating at a high level of participation, not showing up once in a while, but really being a part of the community of after-school, kids can improve their school day attendance, their engagement in learning. One of the data points that I was looking at today, um grades one to five, we measure by putting a survey out to teachers. This is a fairly new thing in our Twenty-One C grants. Do you see that your students that are in our programs, grades one to five, have the same less or more engagement during the day? So it's not wholly because of our progress, but certainly we are a part of that. And fourteen out of fifty-three, twenty-six percent were reported and grouped this past year. It works. Um, and we'll keep monitoring that and comparing it over years. They also, we offer a lot of opportunities for increased physical activity. We help reduce food insecurity by making sure that meals and snacks are provided and they're healthy. We work very closely with the district with the food service um to make sure that that happens, and it's available every single day. We also have additional snacks, because guess what? Kids get hungry. So one is not always enough. Primarily, especially in the summertime, we want to make sure kids have opportunities, have fun, explore, and inquire about themselves, about their friends, about certain topics, whatever the case may be. And we see it all in our programs. You'll see some examples in later slides. But that is the objective. So some of the quick indicators of success that we've seen in the past year, I will start with the box on the right. Um, I shared some of this with some of you other times. Under these grants, we have site visits from the state and other programs. They come in, they observe, they give us some feedback on what they see. The number one thing that they saw, it was at the top of the report, was that the students in our epic programs are very positive about their experiences with us. It was also very clear to the folks visiting how important these programs are, how much the kids really need and want them. So we go in again in just about a year and a half for our next five-year Twenty-One C grant for epic. They are separate grants. Um, I'm hoping that we don't have a too difficult time selling it, because clearly it's very important and necessary. In terms of our kind of harder data from this past year, over our K to twelve programs, we serve five hundred youth at varying degrees. We offer twenty-four hundred hours of programming that range from a hundred and seventy-nine to two hundred days in different programs depending on the schedules. But the high school has typically started a little later, so they have a little bit lower number, but two hundred dates of programming is more the standard. That ends up being four hundred to seven hundred and fifty hours of programming offered at each site. That's a lot of time. It's a lot of time to fill, but it's also a lot of time to have that captive audience, so to speak, and really offer them some of the best things. Um, the survey responses at the bottom of that box are from the summer. We do survey several populations at different times in the year. This was um attendees and parents. And these kids have fun, people feel safe, they value our programs, and they tried new things. They tried new things, and that's huge. That's again why we're here. I have in our room, I thought you might have some fun with this. Talking about staff, who are our staff? We have some really cool folks that work with us, and this is just a kind of highlight of the makeup of our staff in the current year. Um, they range from age sixteen to seventy-six, everything in between. We have folks in high school, folks that have recently graduated, all the way up through PhD. Um, we have two sets of siblings working in our programs. We have two sets of parent-child set working in our programs. We have five it's in here. So five? Yes, five varsity sports coaches working in our programs. And a lot of other interesting, fun facts on that sheet. I won't read them all to you, but I thought it might bring some human aspect to my constant talking about needing to bring more staff in. I wholeheartedly agree with the folks that were here before that we need to attract more people to Vermont. I was one of those people. I've stuck. Um, we can do more and keep that going. So that's a little bit about us and who we are and who's delivering the integrated things. But what are we doing now? I have talked about being student informed. We're moving towards being led more and more. Uh, we have some examples of that. That'll start popping up in the other boxes empty right now. We are parent informed, and we work with community partners all the time. So some of the things that we're doing this year, we have a student-led um tutoring section at the high school as part of our tutoring program up there that's really strong and really successful. And we have a student that came and said, I'd like to do a jewelry making club. Talked about it last year, but they got some traction on it this year, so that's going to happen. At the middle school, and these are just some examples. Um, we have students that worked with a teacher and did some over the summer the history, and they decided that they wanted to design and build RIS. This reading printer. So there it is. Yeah, be me. I I have no idea where to begin on that, but that's okay. I'm old. Um, they also worked on career exploration at the middle school, and you would be amazed at how much the kids got into this. I happened upon them that day. They were all smiling. They were using their phones to take the quizzes. They were talking and looking at different colleges. Um, every staff person had one or two youth with them, and they were answering questions and really digging into some of these things, and they were having a good time in the summer, talking about careers. So, you know, stranger things have happened, maybe. Uh, we have returned homework club for fifth and sixth graders at RIS this year. They're getting homework, and they needed a place to do it, and they needed some help doing it. That was one of our parent-informed choices, because parents were expressing to us that they were a little tired getting home, making dinner, and then having to sit down and do homework. So we built that back in. And again, I walked into the cafeteria one day, and there must have been fifteen kids with a bunch of staff, and they're all working on things, but everybody's happy and quiet and productive, and it was so cool.
Not to mention the parents can't do the math.
I'm going backwards one like there we go. Um, we had one of our um site leaders at RIS did a project with the kids that they went out, collected leaves, but they did multiple things with the leaves, measuring them, categorizing them, identifying different characteristics to categorize them by. And they had, you know, they walked down, they said, what are we going to do with these leaves? But then for forty-five minutes, they were just focused on leaves and, you know, again, having a lot of fun learning without realizing that's what they were doing. Writing down the measurements, thinking about things like that. And then over in the primary schools, a couple weeks ago, they did a project with apple towers, um apples and straws and looking at structural integrity and how much weight and what kind of design am I going to use? Um, so they and they they had conversations afterwards about what worked and what didn't. So that was really interesting to see. We've also this year, most exciting thing, reintroduced thankfully some field trips. Um, so both the primary schools and RIS went apple picking this fall, and they're looking at some other things to do this school year. So that's been really a nice return to, shall we say, normal. Yeah. Um, so in terms of our Tapestry Grant, and to be honest, because we're working on, we will be working on incorporating some of this same type of thing. Incorporating some of this same type of thinking into the new epic grant. Um, these are the goals that we set out in that document. Um, student-driven programming, why is that so important? We want to attract the kids. We're not gonna do that unless they see their peers offering some of this to them. And it's more comfortable, it's not as intimidating. We really wanna work with everybody to make sure that we're engaging as much of the K to four population as we can. And it decided on fifty percent is the goal. So by the end of five years, although hopefully much sooner than that, we'll get there. Um, improved quality of programming and reopen tapestry at East Primary. We really are working toward doing that as soon as possible. We have January as our goal. Again, our only hangout right now is staffing. So we're we're continuing to work on that. But we have a plan. Uh, some of the strategies around achieving those goals are making sure that, again. I'm beating a drum here, but we're hiring enough people and qualified people to do the work. Qualified entails a lot of different things as you see from that handout. Some of it is passion, some of it is education and training. Um, but what do they bring to the students? We want to recruit more students. We want to make sure that we have. The the student voice agency and leadership built into our programs. It goes back to this. Where to be a graduate. How are we helping to promote that? And we need to make sure our staff are trained in incorporating those practices. Having a youth. Propose a project and then working alongside them as more of an advisor than taking it over and running it for them. For example, um, whole leading. Leading to those life experiences. So what are the things we're doing? Where are we going in enhancing our programs? So at the high school. I think I've told you before, cooking, baking is a huge interest to kids and youth. Um, we have someone that has stepped up and said that they are going to lead a cooking and baking club. So that should be really interesting to see where that goes. We are again partnering with Come Alive Outside. This is a combination at the middle school and high school to do an outdoor club. Um, it's a little tough to get that traction, especially at this time of the year when the temperatures have now dropped today. But um, we're working on it. At the middle school, we have a teacher that's introduced esports, which is um teamwork. Leadership, strategy, all kinds of things come into play with that. And it's something we've talked about for years and wanted to do, but we needed somebody to be that passion, that driver of that. Uh, we also have someone that has said we need to work on writing. And it's creating different opportunities for you to work on writing skills in a fun, interactive way. We have more physical activity coming, um, and even in the primary schools, they want to work on health and wellness. So. What is that gonna look like? It'll include some cooking, it'll include some. Exercise, it'll include some decision-making, all kinds of things. In terms of our focus and our programs for professional development. We're still following our path set last year around youth leadership, agency and voice. And picking that up again actually later this month to work with all of our staff. And we're working with someone within the district. Because our staff asked for it, to learn about trauma, trauma-informed practices. So that's gonna be a multi-session, uh, multi-dimensional approach, but everybody feels that they will benefit from it. Agreed. Um, in terms of our program. We are presenting at Vermont After School Conference in early November. We will be attending the middle school, high school summit that the state is putting together. So that we, as programs that offer that level of programming, can learn from each other, share experiences. And then we'll do some site visits with other twenty one C programs. Like I mentioned, our sites we're visiting. We're gonna go visit some programs and learn from them as well. There's a breadth of information out there and we need to make sure that we're part of those discussions. We will continue to celebrate. Um, we are meeting needs. We can need more. We can do more. Over time, we are improving, we are enhancing, and the payoffs are showing in satisfaction. Um, ninety-four percent, that's huge. And we, it's actually kind of scary, because where do you go from there? But um, that's a good position to be in. And we're trying to grow our programs. And as I mentioned at the beginning, National Lights On After School is Thursday, October twenty-sixth. At um northeast, northwest combined at northwest right now. They are planning on doing something that evening with parents and you're more than welcome to join as well. And at RIS, um, there there's some talk of a spaghetti dinner, so we'll see how that works out. Um, but other things come up, but making sure that we are aligning with. Your vision and. The portrait of a graduate and the strategic planning. And actually, I want to, just before I close, make two comments. One is. Bill sent out an email the morning after the strategic planning session a few weeks ago. That two of the top strengths noted in those discussions were our programs. I did not plant that information. That was really exciting and that really was validating for our programs. I shared it out immediately and people were like. Um, and for commenting to one of our staff when you were at RIS about the importance of the programs and how. Valued they are.
Good.
That meant a lot. Thank you so much. Um, she shared that with me today and. It it made quite an impression, so thank you. Any questions? I'm trying to be quick.
Okay. Uh, the physical activity and the cooking, awesome, love those. One thing that I actually developed passion for that you didn't mention to think about sewing. I definitely got into that and that, I'm telling you, I had a lot of fun in the sewing circuit.
There's a volunteer for you.
I I will say I would actually totally come in, because I do enjoy it. And I've had kids come to my house and design their own elf-on-the-shelf outfits, okay?
Ooh, that's clever.
I know. So I'm all over that, you let me know.
I'm gonna write that down. It's funny that you mentioned that, because it has popped up in the last six months and. We put it aside and so we need to look into that and the equipment and so forth, but.
Yeah, I like the whole, the whole math, like it's measuring, the planning, the cutting, fine motor.
I grew up sewing, I get it. Yes, we'd love to, thank you.
Just for those who might not know, who, what is the population you serve? Who is tapestry open to?
Anyone, any students in our schools.
Okay.
Any students in our schools.
I I think that's kind of important, because I, I don't think people necessarily understand that everyone is.
Yes.
Able to to participate.
Karen, you're too old, though.
That's they always say.
Students in our schools.
That's a good point, Karen, to ask that question. Um, how much of your budget is funded by that twenty one C grant?
So for epic, it's a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Um, and and that's, that's not really fair to say, because there is so much um in kind. From the district, you know, we're in buildings. We don't hire our own maintenance staff, that kind of thing, probably. But so to answer your question, epic is one hundred percent uh twenty one C grant funded right now. We're, we're gonna be looking at how to diversify that, because you always have to, um, having been in the grant world for twenty-plus years. Um, in terms of tapestry, it's significantly less. It should be. Less than twenty percent. Um, currently, it's. We depend on it more than we will when we get our feedback under us. Um, but it's really good to have that money.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, that's nice.
I just want to say thank you. A lot of families really depend on having after-school programs. And to have such a great program, and it's a huge responsibility, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And yeah, we're actually branching out, as I mentioned, the dinner and whatnot, to make sure that we're expanding our. Family support and interaction as well this year. That's a real focus of all of our programs, so um, it should be fun. See where that takes us. Maybe we'll have a sewing circle.
And Kathy might actually lead the knitting group.
crochet while we're at it.
Not an all-in.
Well, thank you so much for having me. I will step away and let you move on.
Yeah, we like the music.
Well, I didn't have any videos, so I thought, let's change it along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
You're up again.
I'll up again, okay. I'll try to be unique. I'll try to be more efficient uh than than I have, then maybe. Maybe if I bring Ted up. This is gonna link right into Ted Ted's presentation. So we have our enrollment report. We give you this every year. You had in your packet, and on the first work, what we use this for is, this is how we're coming to. Make decisions on budgets, right? This, this is why, this is at the beginning of the budget process. And so if you look through it, you've looked through it already, you see in detail on pages one through four. Some of the enrollment pass and projected. At all the different schools, and if I were going to be really efficient, I just asked you to turn to page five, the last page. The last page basically has. What the previous pages have all in this night, nice neat column. And you can see. On the right-hand column, has the total number of students that we have in the district. And you can see the previous columns, K through two, three through six, seven, seven and eight, and nine and twelve. So you can see that there's been enrollment decline for the past, well, since probably two thousand, two thousand and one. That was the hi- high watermark for the district. And this is mirroring the, the enrollment decline that's happening across the state, population decline across the state. Um, where you see the population's getting older, right? Number of students is getting smaller, except in Chittenden County. That's the one place where they haven't had that decline. Um, and I I'd say we're. Uh, we haven't been affected by it as much as some other places, but we still have had this decline. You can see. You do the math, it, it comes out to be somewhere between some years is one percent decline, sometimes, some years three percent. But I'll, I'll just say it's around one point five percent per year. You think I'm right on that, Ted? One, one point five to two percent or so. And if you look at the last five, last five years, let's say. You know, um, nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one, you you're going down two point five, down one percent, down one point seven, down one point seven. So we've had that declining. I think the board understands that this district has been good about. If we've, as we've encountered enrollment decline, we've looked to scale back staffing. And we've been pretty faithful to that. It's cer- certainly for the last three years, we've, we've lowered our staffing levels quite a bit, reflecting that enrollment decline. So part of, so the reason I'm saying this is, we have, we see, this is what the enrollment is. We're gonna build a budget off of that, that's what Ted's gonna speak about next. I I just asked you for one consideration. Um, of course, you're, you're, you're matching staffing levels to enrollment. That's the logical choice. And sometimes it doesn't fit exactly, because you might, you know, need. You know, your, your class, class size goes from, I don't know, twenty-one to twenty-two or twenty-one to nineteen. You're not necessarily gonna reduce a position. But enrollment and and staffing are linked together. But also think about when you're, when we're thinking about staffing, think about needs. Our popular, our community has a lot of needs. And sometimes certain programs that we have in the, in the school district are really important and might require a richer staffing level. For instance, recently, we've had a pretty decent, pretty significant influx of um. English language learners in the district, and that's uh speaking about diversity, that's a, that's a great addition to our district and to our student population. But it requires staffing. Uh, so, so that is not necessarily gonna be aligned one-to-one. Um, or I think about, if you, I think our population at Grove Street, which is a real success story. Um, we have, we make sure kids graduate through that program. But we have forty-three kids there. Um, the staffing level compared to the bigger campuses is rich, but kids. Go there because they have a challenge facing uh a big, the big setting of the high school, the big population. And this allows them to be uh in a smaller setting, more personalized attention. It helps them get through to to graduation. So we're making that decision. We're going to be a little bit richer there, so that we can help kids get to the, get to the end goal. Um, so as we're going through budget planning processes, we're thinking about enrollment and we're thinking about needs. And that's leading into you, I hope. But I'll, I'll take any questions, if you have any questions before you go to Ted.
Do these numbers on this, do they include Pier Point or Allen Street?
Yeah.
In, in the, in the.
Yeah, so like.
By grade level?
By grade level, right, right, yep.
Thank you.
I would just say that I think we also need to keep in mind. Um, our tuition students and the fact that a lot of our tuition students choose Rutland. Because of the programs offered, so you know, there is a cost-benefit analysis there to be had. If you cut certain programs, how much are we gonna lose in tuition students?
Right.
This includes sending students?
Yeah, Sherlene's asking, does that include uh students coming into the district from outside the district? Yes, that, that, those numbers include those.
That includes Stafford as well, I'm sorry.
Not Stafford, though, not Stafford on this list. So, so set, we have seventy-something number, numbered kid, oh, I have it right here, actually. We have, oops, I had it right here. Stafford, our, Stafford has seventy-six uh RHS students. But those seventy-six would be in here. But not, not in here are the kids from OV or Fairhaven or the other Stafford kids.
Which, that leads me into another question that you don't have to answer tonight, but I'm just curious. Has the tech center over the years, we're going back nineteen ninety-five to ninety-six. Has enrollment and interest increased over the years for the tech center versus like from ninety-six to now? I'd kind of be curious if you guys had the ability to kind of go back and what were numbers then and what are they now? Thank you.
I can bring that to you as much as I can.
I'm cur- sorry. I'm curious, how are the projections? I'm just looking at the year-over-year and. Like most districts in our state, our enrollment has gone down in almost all age brackets for the last few years. But the projection, with the exception of K to two, is up for next year. How did we come to that?
So that's a good question. So the way we do this is, uh, I, I, are you on page four, maybe?
I'm on five. The projected twenty-four, twenty-five on the bottom.
Oh, I got you, okay.
That I'm looking at each year over year.
Yep. Um, well, maybe if you turn back to page four, that, that'll, that'll show you the piece of it. At the bottom, you'll see. Says Rutland Town students, Barso students. We make the assumption that those kids are going to come to us, but that's not necessarily the case. Not all of them are going to. Uh, the more, majority of them do, but not, not all of them do, but. We just go on that assumption, so that's where part of the projection comes from. And then Heather, the, the last piece is. Uh, starting at kindergarten. We say next year's kindergarten is gonna be the same number as we got this year. But we don't know if that's true or not, but we, and we just move them up a grade bit by bit. So the projection is um. It's never accurate, but it's, we just try to be conservative in color. Might line up.
One more. Yes. Um, are you, in regards to the high school, first, like eleventh graders going into senior year. Are you taking into account the amount of kids who are going to Cassington or do enrollment, because.
Oh, I'm so glad, yeah.
Getting. Bigger and bigger every year, so that's helping, that's definitely declining our numbers and taking money from Rutland to Cassington.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Uh, yeah, that's, 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 you can see there's a little drop at the high school, and a chunk of that is from. Uh, kids who are going to senior year and uh taking advantage of the early college option that Cassington has. They end up coming off our enrollment. Um, they're duly enrolled and they can participate in our activities. They're duly enrolled and they can participate in our activities and our athletics, but they're really, the money is going to Castleton, right? Or some of the other state colleges.
What about the kids who are dual enrolled, as in some of them are taking classes at the high school and some like, because like my daughter, her senior year did classes at both high school and at Castleton at the same time. So would that be included in our, which number?
That, those kids who are taking up to, you can get two free classes
Right.
Through that program. They, they belong to us.
Okay.
But the voucher goes to
If they're full time at Castleton, then the number goes to Castleton.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
More questions? Okay. Business office update.
Good, thank you, everybody. Excellent. Well, as part of the business office update tonight, I'm just going to touch on two topics briefly. Recap of several points regarding our recent and upcoming audits, as well as a review of some assumptions as they're developing for fiscal 25 budget. So in terms of the audits, just a confirmation, many of you are already aware, but the audits for fiscal 21 and 22 were submitted and accepted by the Federal Audit Clearinghouse. Those audits included four recommended controls improvements, which we are implementing for the current year end close. An important aspect of audits is not just that we're obligated to do them, given that we accept federal and state money. But it's really an important learning opportunity for everybody to take a step back in the business office. You know, busily making sure that we conduct operations in a smooth way every day. But there's really a lot of value to be had when you've got an excellent auditor, as we do in Sullivan and Powers, to answering their questions, going through a thought process and, and not only making sure the controls are adequate, but also making sure that we are being efficient as well as effective. And I was personally very pleased with what we were able to learn in working with Sullivan and Powers in the course of this calendar year to finish up these two audits. And as you might recall, it was Sullivan and Powers' first years auditing us. So they were going through a learning curve as well. Because this is an important annual event, I invited the senior auditor in charge, Mr. Rick Brigham, to come and to report directly to the finance committee meeting coming up on November 7. But I wanted to mention this to the board because as usual, any board member, in fact, of course, any member of the public is welcome to attend those finance committee meetings. The reason for having Rick come and speak directly to the committee and any board members is this gives you an opportunity, if you wish, to ask questions directly of Rick, to get your questions answered in an unvarnished way. You know, we try in presenting information to you to be as objective as possible, but this way you can speak directly to the independent auditor. So I would encourage anybody who has the time and the interest to come. And here Rick will probably be participating via Zoom unless he's in town for business. And we've set aside about 20 or 30 minutes for him to give you his overview, his prioritization, as well as an update on the fact that we're already getting underway for the fiscal 23 audit. This month and next month, the business office is putting together the natural kind of documentation that we do going through a year end close and which an auditor is typically going to want to look at as a precursor and as also a way to prioritize where they're going to focus their efforts. Then the plan is going to be in December and January for the auditors to come in and conduct their field work and do their analysis. Then hopefully in January and February, we write up the report and file it by the end of February. The audit is actually not due until March 31st, but we want to submit ahead of time because there's no penalty for being early. Also, since we are going to be getting into a lot of the writing for the strategic plan in the January, February timeframe, we're trying to get as much of the audit work taken care of as we can before we get into that, that spread for the strategic plan, hopefully which will finish in February, March. So that's a quick overview of the audit. Would you like me to, do you have any questions about those results? Okay, let's talk briefly about the 25 budget. I'm just going to remind you of a couple of aspects of the timeline, give you a couple of overview facts. I'm not going to burden you with a whole lot of detail. That comes at our next meeting. So we're in the process of thinking about staffing assumptions and how that will drive expense and revenue budgets for the coming year. You know, Bill was talking about enrollment and staffing. I'm going to show you a couple of charts briefly in a moment. I think he was making a really important point, which all of you probably appreciate. And that is that you always have to look at the mix of student needs. Who are the students that are coming into the district? You know, where, where does the district need to meet those students? And as Pam Reed, our Director of Special Education and Equity Inclusion has always reminded me, every year there can be a different mix of students requiring different types of services. And the district endeavors, of course, to optimize its resources to meet those students where they are in whatever grade. So we work carefully, of course, starting in September with the administration, with the principals, with the program directors, to anticipate as best we can, what will those specific needs be? How many students are likely to be on IEPs in the coming year? In recent years, out of a little bit less than 2,000 students, 400 or more have been on IEPs. That's a good thing because we're meeting those needs, but that of course comes with a cost. So on November 7th, we will give you a preliminary consolidated outlook. We'll have finished our updates of expense forecasts and revenues. Hopefully those will be relatively in balance. Then we'll give you the consolidated outlook and we will probably tell you what some of the sensitivities are. And that'll be an opportunity for both the finance committee on November 7th, as well as then the full board the following week on November 14th, to really start to look at, is this going to be, you know, the kind of thing that you feel comfortable with? Do you want us to test any certain aspects of that? We would take that input from the finance committee and the board in early to mid-November, go back and do whatever additional analysis and fine tuning is necessary and appropriate based on your guidance and what Bill and the other administrators are suggesting to us. Then early December, the finance committee and mid-December on the 12th, the board will review what I consider to be not so much an initial budget proposal, but probably an updated budget recommendation. Now, if everything has fallen into place between now and December 12th, that would be good news. But realistically, when you look at that budget and we update our assumptions, there may be further questions and analysis that you would like us to do. And that's why, you know, we're going to have, we're going to utilize the remainder of December and early January to address that. If we're able to do that on a timely basis, then at your meeting on January 9th, you would be asked to approve the latest budget proposal. So again, if we, if we progress the work on a timely and effective basis, there will be no surprises. And you'll hopefully be very comfortable with what we're proposing by the time we get to January 9th. Any questions about the timing? And remember, you're always, you know where to find us. So you'll always feel free to, sometimes the question that individual board members will ask are very, very helpful to us as well as to you. So please don't hesitate to give us a shout if you have a suggestion or a question in the meantime. So Bill was talking about enrollment earlier and I just want to show you a graphic of some of the more recent enrollment. And what this chart shows you is we do several times a year, working with our registrar Carolyn Babbitt, as well as Betty and a few others. We do a survey of what the enrollment in the schools look like. We typically take these snapshots in September and October, usually in the middle of the school year and then always, of course, in June. And what you're looking at on this chart simply is if you go back to October of 2018, the beginning of that school year, and then of course, June 2019, the end of that school year. And then you're seeing, you know, again, beginning of year, end of year, beginning of year, end of year, just to show you a little bit of the trend. And what, what I think is interesting is, you know, this recent high, if you go back, as Bill was saying, a few years ago, we were, you know, in the, in the 18, 1900 range. Then it came down during COVID, continued to come down as you can see. But something as unusual has happened this month. And that is for October of this year, our enrollment went up for the first time by a significant amount at the beginning of the school year. So as you can see in the inset, as of October of this, you know, just a week or two ago, we're up to 1,850 students. That's up about 2% from the 1,816 that our enrollment report told us at the end of the previous school year. That's a pretty significant change and we think we understand why that's occurring. But that can have an implication for funding that will come into the school district. The Agency of Education calculates a lot of metrics, which are basically two-year rolling averages. So to the extent that, you know, we see such a trend continue, it looks like we might be on a bit of a favorable up trend to get some incremental funding based on that formula. As I said there in the last quirky dot, the last bullet point, there is a two-year rolling average, so it wouldn't have an immediate effect. But it's sustained, that, that's a positive development. Bill was talking about staffing relative to enrollment. And you've seen this chart before, but I just wanted to bring it out to, as a reminder that if you go back to the budget for fiscal 21, that budget had about 520 full-time positions budgeted. All the numbers on this chart exclude positions that are funded by the ESSR grants because of course, back in 21 and 22, we didn't have the ESSR program and I want you to see apples to apples. So the budget for this year that we're currently in has 482 non-ESSR funded positions. That's a pretty significant change. Obviously, that's down about 40 positions over the course of the, the three years from 21 to 24 budget. That's a decline of almost 8%, which has more than kept pace with the decline in enrollment. This is not something that we should build into our expectations as a guaranteed trend. What it represents is each year, Bill, Rob, the principals and others have stepped back to say, okay, what can we do in terms of optimizing and rebalancing resources? Are there positions that we feel we can reduce without significantly compromising the quality of our educational program? So, you know, I, I think that represents a great responsiveness on the part of the administration. We're in the process of trying to ascertain what 25 will look like and that'll be part of the conversation next month.
Well, I just had a comment because when you mentioned COVID, that kind of reminded me that our students are still suffering greatly and are way behind, or well behind where they should be because of COVID. So I think that's another point when we're talking about staffing versus enrollment ratio is I think it's almost taking two staff for one classroom to try to, you know, get these kids back on track. And I think we're going to see that for, unfortunately, for a number of years.
I'm not a professional educator, of course, but I've read a lot of literature, as you probably have as well, that described that as a nationwide trend.
Exactly.
And, and I think some people are a bit, I don't know if you'd say surprised, but they're finding that the educational gaps that resulted coming out of COVID are taking longer to address, are taking longer to close because it's a very complex thing. There are social, emotional issues that were created as well. When, when we think about this, I say thank goodness that the district has programs like Tapestry and Epic, which you heard about earlier, because that is one of several tools that we have to try and close these gaps. But my gut feel, just in reading what I've read, is these gaps are going to be with us for a while. And the district, as you're suggesting, like any district, probably needs to plan for maintaining enough staff and resource to help these students get caught up. Because the impact over their lifetime, I mean, some people have said already, there've been studies that have said, you know, a graduate that might earn X amount of money in the course of their lifetime now might be making $70,000 to $100,000 less because of learning gaps that have not yet been closed. So, so all kinds of interesting metrics, but the key is it's a quality of life issue, it's a potential issue, and there's a lot of work to be done. You're right.
Charlene?
I have a question about the professionals, the staff that are covered by the ESSR funds. I don't know how long that's going to be covering. And is there some sort of cliff that we're going to be facing where we're going to be dropping off a bunch of staff that we're going to have to replace all at once because the ESSR funds are going to run out? And then we have this population of half that
That's, that's a really great question. And of course you have, there's a number of issues wrapped up in that question, so let me just back up for a moment. So the 24 budget that we have for this year includes 13 positions that are ESSR funded, okay? When we began a couple of years ago, hiring, hiring positions that we assumed and, and determined would be ESSR funded, we were very, we were very careful and strategic about this. If we hired somebody for a position that was ESSR funded and we didn't expect it to continue, we let the person know, this is not a permanent position, it's got a one or a two-year timeframe. ESSR, we are in the process of looking, as you would expect, at people who potentially have been hired into some of these positions, who perhaps have demonstrated wonderful performance, who may be keepers in terms of, yes, we want them to continue with the district. Rob is working carefully with other administrators to identify those people and potentially roll them forward. Because every year, as you might recall, in the last couple of years, the district has had about 10% turnover. There've been some years where we've had, and this was not this last year, but going back a year or two, 25 retirements, 25 resignations out of the approximately 500 FTEs. My point in sharing those, those data are, there's typically enough room and turnover to make provision for, you know, bringing other people on. Now, it may be, and, and I don't know the answers to this, it's one of the things we're thinking about, is it may be that there are some positions that provide a valuable educational service in the context of what Karen was describing, to help us close specific educational gaps that as of September 30, 2024, ESSR will no longer fund. There'll be three months in fiscal 25 that the ESSR grants go on. We may end up deciding as a district to say, you know, we need these kinds of positions. And even though they're not going to be ESSR funded going forward, the value add to the district is important. Where can we rebalance? Where can we reallocate resources so as not to automatically just add? When people leave too, we don't necessarily automatically hire to backfill those positions. We think about how we're going to arrange. That's how we manage that curve without any significant dislocations. So, I don't know, I'm just going to turn around and ask Rob, who obviously follows that really closely. Are there any other aspects of, of Charlene's questions that you think we might want to focus on?
Yeah, I would, I would say two quick things. Of the, when you look at the last two bars, Ted's, Ted's slide here is really good. It does show how closely the district has been monitoring staffing and student enrollment and how we've morphed that over the years. And you see a decline from 21, 22, 23. And then the 23 to 24 change is also pretty significant. I would say that of the 13 positions that Ted is talking about that are funded by ESSR, your question is actually, we've been, we've been watching this for the last two years. We intentionally did a few things. One is there are three positions within those 13 that just aren't coming back and they know that. There's one other that's like, if we need you, you're coming back. But then the majority of those positions are positions that we tactically place in ESSR funding to use that federal money to save local taxpayers dollars. And in years when we were looking at what was potentially a significant increase, if not for a substantial yield, we said, this is one way that we're going to offset the, the local, local expenses. So if you look at 23 and 24, for me, I say, let's say there's nine positions that we had, that we, that we have to keep because they're contracted positions with seniority. That still puts us at two below for FY24, two below we actually had in FY23, even if you add those people back in. And his 493 to 482 is a standard measure because he said in each one of those, he's been giving Rob that many positions to be good stewards of the budget. And then the truth is, we are, we are analyzing and saying, okay, how many of those people can land in a federal, another federal grant? And some of them may have to land in a local expense. But so that's something we've been thinking about since ESSR came on board and you're smart to ask that question. But I think Ted's, Ted's chart is spot on about seeing a decline in that. And I'm, I'm glad you asked because I wouldn't want anybody out there who's funded by ESSR to say, wait, am I out of a job? And the answer is, no, unless you've been told, hey, when ESSR's up, your job is up. The rest of them will, will find a spot for them. Ted's right too. We watch for, can we see any? Can we see any reasonable reductions through attrition or retirement?
So and to and to give a little comfort, you notice that we've got a couple of green colored bars up there. Those are actuals. Those aren't the budget numbers. That's how many people were on the payroll in December of twenty-two. Because we also, we all also like to track, well, where are we relative to the budget? And although I didn't put it on this chart, the number for um, September of twenty-three, so it's kind of comparable to the budget. Was four hundred and eighty-nine in total. With thirteen S R, meaning four hundred and seventy-six non-S R positions. Which means as of September, we were tracking about half a dozen below the budgeted number. So, you know, we're in the range, and if we were gonna add a few positions plus or minus, we'd actually still be below. What we've budgeted for this year. So um, part of that is just because of the difficulty of hiring, because the job market is so difficult. But it, but where the point with that is, we are not out of line. We're not out of range with where we need to be. Uh, to be able to manage this, because we knew that September thirty, twenty twenty-four is coming and that S R funding ends at that point in time. Does that answer your question? Any other questions or comments about the staffing? Well, I'm gonna give you a little bit of good news on the next chart, okay, because that that doesn't, that doesn't hurt. I I don't want you to get too concerned about the all the details on this chart. I just want you to look at the 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 curve that's in blue. Because if you follow that line in blue, you'll see that as of August, which is the, which is the furthest date here. That line in blue is at around two, two percent in this case. And why is that important? Well, there are lots of different measures of inflation. And there's, I mean, literally dozens of them, you can, um, I I don't want to get you confused with the technical. Aspects of this because they measure different things. But one of them, which is followed by the Federal Reserve, is called Personal Consumption Expenditures Price Index, P C E. And this, these set of curves are for the core P C E excluding energy and food. It's a little bit bizarre because we all have to buy energy and food, but. That sometimes is looked at because energy and food bounce around so much that it it creates a lot of volatility, whereas it's deemed that core inflation indexes. Can be a little bit more stable. Well, look at that blue line. What that says is. Because inflation results were so weak over the summertime and particularly in August. In fact, the Wall Street Journal reported the core P C E going up a tenth of a percent in August was the weakest monthly increase since twenty twenty. This suggests preliminarily, and you know, a few months doesn't make a trend. But this suggests that inflation has been slowing down. Prices, of course, are still high, but the rate of inflation is slowing down. And if you look at what the inflation rates for P C E core did over the summertime, and then you annual annualize those three months. You'd end up with a two percent inflation rate. It's four percentage points over where it was a year ago, because of course, earlier months had not slowed down as much. But the point here is, it looks like price increases are slowing down. We're gonna learn some more on Thursday because a different price index, the Consumer Price Index, C P I. That's gonna come out, but again, consensus forecasts are, it's probably gonna be in the three and a half to four percent range. Not nearly as bad as it's been. So we'll see. We're in the process right now. Of making different inflation estimates for the different things that we buy. So that we can come up with hopefully a relatively good expectation for what the budget is, and let me roll forward to that. So just as an indication, one, one inflation measure that is not likely to be in the single digits is for the medical plan. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont has already filed for fifteen and a half percent price increase on individual plans. Um, another healthcare provider applied for a little under thirteen percent. It's hard to expect that it's gonna be much less than thirteen percent, even though the. The rates get approved sometimes below the filings. So we're looking at double digits most likely. Student meal costs, we spend over a million dollars a year on on student meals. Um, that's based on a specific C P I index that we follow. Right now, that's tracking at about seven percent, so that's probably where we're gonna be. We'll. We'll adjust our meal costs based upon anticipated enrollment trends. A lot of times that's been down, this time it might be up, and then factor in prices. Um, heating oil and electricity. Oh, do you have a question?
I I did, I'm sorry. On the um, student meal cost.
Yeah.
How does that, because the state is the one saying every student gets free lunch? Does the state reimburse?
The state does reimburse, and the state does say that, yes.
Okay.
And and specifically, the reimbursement rate is set um, based on. A specific price index that's issued for February by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So when that comes out, that will tell us exactly what we will be allowed. Uh, or what we'll be allowed to um, pay the service provider. So year before, that metric came out at six point eight percent. We said, okay, we can pay, uh, we can pay up to six point eight percent more per meal. Uh, but then we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed for those meals. And actually, the the mix between. The reimbursements from the federal government, which have changed significantly over the last couple of years with some different programs. Versus this reimbursement funding mechanism that I had, we have to build into the budget. We've actually, it's been a net positive for the school district. And so we have a very separate um, mandatory fund that's for food only. And we actually have a balance of several hundred thousand dollars to the surplus in that. That surplus can only be used for food-related services, however. So since we got reimbursed by more than we had to pay out because of these changes in federal programs in the last few years. We're doing things like upgrading kitchen equipment and making other changes um, to hopefully improve food service delivery. But um, this has not been a problem area for us.
Okay.
It will, you will see, when you look at the budget, you'll see potentially, even if enrollment stays the same, you'll see a seven percent increase. But it's always relative to the revenues of the grants. And and in this area, it's 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 been a positive recently for us. Any, yeah, sure. Any other questions about the the uh, I'll keep rolling on down it. The Green Mountain Power, as many of you know, has already announced a a five point three percent increase in the coming year, so we're gonna work that, base that in for electric costs. Heating oil is actually trading at a lower price per gallon right now than it was a year ago, so uh, it'll be a tough guess, but. Maybe we'll get some relief there. Um, Glenn and the Building Committee have talked extensively about the replacement for the turf field. We'll be building in assumptions um, for twenty-five. We have. Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra already built into twenty-four, and there's potential to use a contingency fund um. Portion if we need, but we'll be getting into that in detail at on November seventh, at the Combined Building Committee and Finance Committee meeting. I have asked our contacts at the Agency of Education if they've heard anything more from their contacts in Washington, D C. About the level of federal funding, and so far, the answer is the same. In spite of budget pressures, they're not expecting any reductions in. In federal title funding, and if that's the case, that will be good news. Um, the new student waitings will be implemented for fiscal twenty-five, the budget that we're gonna be working on. It's probably not gonna be as significant a benefit to the district as we had once hoped. For a variety of technical reasons in the way they're implementing it, but hopefully it won't be a a hurt to the district either. So those are some of the budgeting factors that we're working with now. Of course, I skipped past. The first point here because again, Bill and Rob and the principals are working on, you know, what do they, what what levels of staffing do they think they need? To deliver the educational programming that they think is warranted for the coming year. So we'll be working with that and um. We'll have to make some assumptions because um, all four of our labor union agreements expire June thirty, twenty twenty-four, so we're gonna be forecasting twenty-five. Having to make some assumptions about how those negotiations go.
Stephanie, the last bullet point, the waiting study is at the um, what we've over the last several years that.
Yes, yes. And and what's interesting is they they did, um, as we were hoping. Uh, the legislation did add weights and update the weights for students coming from families with lower incomes. Unfortunately, by the time the legislation was finalized, those weights were. Those weights were not as strong as as we thought they might be initially. Also, in updating the weights for urban versus rural, because Rutland City is more urban than rural. We lost some weighting there in the changes that were made, so it's probably gonna end up being something close to a one for us. Okay, all right. That's all I had for tonight. Come well rested for the next meetings because there'll be a lot to go through then, but uh. Hopefully, again, we'll have a good news story for you. So thank you so much for your time and attention tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And congratulations on finishing all of the audits.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we uh. I gotta, the the kudos really go to our our new hires, uh, who all did, came up the learning curve very quickly. As well as the rest of the team, and uh, we're in a much stronger position than we've been since I've been here, so. I'm very encouraged. So thank you again. Appreciate your support.
Okay, and we have the Stafford Technical Center update.
So I'll start with an intro while Bill passes. I've asked him to be short, sweet and concise, um, which for him is a hard thing to do. So he's got a challenge tonight. So I'm Melissa Connor, Director of Stafford. Um, typically, we're here talking about the high school program, I mean. But once a year, what we like to come and give you an update of what happens from two twenty until about eight thirty. Um, sometimes up to six days a week at Stafford. Um, and so Bill Lucci is the Assistant Director of Adult Technical Education. And we're proud to say we have the highest enrollment of um, adult evening programs in the state. And it's due to this man. Um, you know, technically, I oversee the adult ed, but my. The way my philosophy is, I make sure he has the resources of what he needs, and then I stay out of his way and let him go. Um, I think there's a lot of trust and respect between us, um, that allows him to do great things. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Bill. To share what's going on in the world of adult ed.
Thank Melissa for coming in. She's been struggling with lots of things going around. Effectively, she didn't bring it.
I didn't bring it.
Didn't share, but we share a lot of things, but not that. So thanks for, thanks for the invite to come tonight, um, to talk a little bit about some of the stuff that happens when all the kids go home. And the building sort of turned over to the the grownups. Um, most of the, a lot of the conversations sort of involved uh, tonight involves some of the stuff that. I'm the beneficiary of, or that we're the beneficiary of, and that's the uh, the outreach in both community partners. And the outreach that we do to provide um, really workforce development. Back in the day. It used to be that um, adult education was uh, were classes that. Uh, they were fun to take, uh, crocheting and not to say anything that that crocheting and knitting and sewing is a bad thing, but. Uh, a lot of people are looking for workforce development things now. That's all shifted from. Gretchen Gould, who used to teach art in the um, in the art department at Rutland High School, retired. And now she's been working for eight years doing pottery classes. It fills. Every single semester, we get eight people, um, six, so she's taught sixteen times. Bringing pottery, the love of pottery out there to people, and I really appreciate that being part of the menu of classes that we have. But honestly, the 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 primary focus of what I do is workforce development for our community partners. And um, I know that the report was sent out electronically to you. Um, about some of the things that we've been doing. I mean, we've got a a robust welding program. Uh, we deliver welding where Killington sends people over to us. Uh, the, all throughout this, the state of Vermont municipal garages send um. Their workers to us in the summertime for a week-long intensives on how to repair plow blades. And and truck frames that get pounded in the in the wintertime. They send them from all over the state, from eight or ten garages all through the state, and they converge on Stafford, and we deliver that. That training for the state of Vermont. We have a clinical, a certified clinical medical assistant program that um, we do for uh, community health. Uh, which includes now, they have two or three dental practices, and we do, we designed a program based on what their um. Their providers, their 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 point people in each one of those practices said, we need certified clinical medical assistants to do this in order to do the job efficiently. And because of, Ted mentioned, the, you know, there's not, there's a shortage of workers in a in a variety of areas. So they told me what they needed in a certified clinical medical assistant, and we designed the program for them. Um, and we've delivered it uh, four times to um, about forty-five incumbent workers, people that are actually working there. Um, to design and deliver a program using our in-house people to um. To to bolster their staff in an area that they needed it, and we're doing another program starting in November. And it's maxed out. We've got a waiting list. Community Health is is front-loading that with a lot of people to um. You know, to 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 bolster shortages in their staff with good, solid people that are already working at a lower level in the organization. Um, that's what we do. Everybody knows about our uh, Casella waste systems. Um, they they built us a really nice classroom in West Rutland at their operations center. Um, we, so we alleviated the need to pay rent um, in North Clarendon. And we share a wonderful classroom and training space over there. They're putting uh. Close to two hundred drivers through the program right now throughout New England, and then we have our own. Non-Casella people coming through our side of the house in our program. Um, with with Casella because of their generosity and providing us a really top-of-the-line education and training facility. We do um, stuff with General Electric Aerospace. We we help monitor their. Um, toolmaker apprenticeship program and put dozens of people over the years through that program. We've, we've been asked, um, our our footprint used to be Rutland County because we're Rutland County's Regional Tech Center. Uh, but uh, the tech centers uh, in other areas of the state uh, don't have the capacity to deliver programs and training that. Uh, that they need, so we're actually going outside of our region and providing education and training in our areas that we're successful with here. Um, in in other areas, for example, we we're doing um, we we've done five or six L and A. Licensor, licensure training programs in the Randolph area for Gifford Hospital. Uh, because the tech center in that region isn't delivering that program and they need it. So we'll actually. Go onsite and deliver this L and A training program to area nursing homes uh, in in that area, and we did it for three years down at. Mary Porter Hospital in Middlebury because Middlebury wasn't delivering that program. So we actually bring our show on the road and and go to the areas where they, where they actually need that education and training in those areas. Our our cosmetology, you got the brochure for our beauty care services program? Somebody went to our program today. Who, congratulations.
Well, I didn't, I just visited. I I'm got, I'm gonna call and make my appointment for the whole roster.
I'll make the pitch, I'll make, I'll make the pitch tonight for our adult program. We we have uh, cosmetology, aesthetics and soon nail. Technology programs. Uh, our partnership with the Woods at Killington, they've provided us with a wonderful space up there that we're we're paying for. Um, but we've got a a full capacity um, aesthetics program that's operating up there, and Nail Tech will be up there soon. For adults, which saves them having to drive up to Burlington to Evada and O'Briens or across the river into New Hampshire to get that service. They're actually getting that education and training right here in Rutland County with our partnership with uh, the Woods. We're contacted today with, by um, Woodstock In-N-Out Resort. Uh, they're coming to visit us because they see us as a place where they're going to be able to import our adult graduates to work for. Woodstock In-N-Out Resorts. Um, they're they're pretty excited about coming over and and seeing what we have to offer. And how we can help them identify shortages in their their workforce in that high-end, that high-end facility. Um, so that the beauty care services, uh, right now, they're in the stage where they're looking for live bodies to come up and have. Facials and other services. You you just.
Right, I mean, we're gonna sign up, right?
Like a list.
So you shoot me an email and and I'll get you in touch with the instructors for both of those programs. Cosmetology, we're doing onsite up at Stafford with Michelle Field, who are, Michelle Dagel now, who runs that program. Um, they're looking for customers on Tuesdays, Thursdays and all. Um, they're looking for customers on Tuesdays, Thursdays and alternating Saturdays. Believe it or not, I I got my first facial touch. Don't let this be the judge of whether or not. They did look, I say, material in front of them.
He was glowing the day after.
I was, I was, I was glowing. Like, my wife still recognized me, which was sort of the downside. Like, I I know who you are, so what did they actually do to you if I could recognize you? But if you shoot me an email, I'll I'll get you in touch with those instructors. They would love to have you come up and deliver the services by um, because they need those hours in order to get to to sit for the licensure exams. And I'll let you look at the rest of the stuff on that report, but the one thing that's pretty exciting, and I'll 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 leave it at that. Not kicking me out, not kicking me out, which is great. Um, we were, we were contacted by uh, the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation. Uh, Jen Stromston runs that, she's the executive director. Um, they have like this tremendous influx of Afghan uh, and Afghan refugee resettlement project down in in Brattleboro. And a lot of these guys that came in, uh, right now, they've got sixteen. Uh, they were on the hit list for the Taliban because they were embedded with the the US troops and translators for the troops. So they were the first ones out of the country when we pulled out. Um, and they settled in Brattleboro. And most of them were uh, also driving trucks for for the United States. Uh, unfortunately, driving trucks in Afghanistan doesn't give you a CDL license that is transferable here in the United States. Go figure. Um, they should get them because it's not like they have great roads and we're transporting wonderful things with wonderful equipment in Af- Afghanistan. So they approached us, if uh, none of these guys speak English, like zero English. Uh, they're in an English language program there um, in in Brattleboro. So Jen said, can we send, can we work with you because you're an educational facility and you understand these types of things? Can we work with you to develop um, a CDL program where these guys can transition into becoming truck drivers and they want to stay here in Vermont? So uh, it's been quite a, quite a ride um, to try to figure out like how we're going to do this. But we've got a lot of partners working together um, to make that happen. Um, there's another seventy-five Afghans coming in November, and a lot of them want to be truck drivers. They're all working for the most part with CNS Wholesale Grocers right now, full-time. Um, they came up to visit the school um, and saw what what we had. They love our truck, billboard, on wheels, truck, trailer. Um, and and they want to drive that thing, and we're going to get them there. Well, they've been here a year, so they qualify for VSAC. Um, at the advancement grant that VSAC has for Vermont residents because they've been here for a year. So the funding is going to all be in place to train these guys to become truck drivers, which is a pretty exciting thing. And um, we've trained Christina Kumka last year from our video program, created a training video for us. And they're translating the the captions in the video of the voiceover to do a pre-trip on a truck into uh, all three dialects of the Afghani language in order to help them understand what a successful pre-trip is on the trucks that they're doing. So there's a lot of moving parts, no pun intended, on a CDL program. Um, there's, there's a lot of moving parts, but it's a pretty exciting thing. And this is, uh, they're going to come up on Saturdays, they're going to get a a crew van, and they're going to drive up to take our um, uh, onsite uh, training program, the theory part of it, right there in West Rutland uh, from Brattleboro. Um, so you know, our footprint extends all over the place and it's um, it makes my job really um, pretty, pretty awesome, to be perfectly honest with you, to be able to do and deliver these things, not only in our region, but but outside of our region. Because if we don't do it, um, question, of course, is like, who's going to do it if we're not going to do it? So um, that's, yes. Yes, so I I'll be open to any questions that you might have. Don't forget to send me an email if you want to. I'll I'll hook you up with with our aesthetics and our Cosmo teachers for our adult students. If you have any questions.
It's like the most popular guy here right now.
So I do have a question. I mean, I think the programs are fabulous, but um, I know that many city taxpayers would ask, who, where is the funding coming? Are city taxpayers funding for Brattleboro or, you know, these other programs outside of the county?
Nope, there are, none of the programs, one of the mandates that that we have is that absolutely no program that we offer uh, operates at a deficit. So they have to break even. Um, about between seventy and eighty percent of the money that uh, that we take in, it goes back into the revenue accounts for Rutland City. Uh, comes from VSAC, from the advancement grant. Uh, there's a, there's a financial pinch point where people have to uh, you know, be in need of that. But it's a pretty high standard that VSAC has for that advancement grant. They pay for upwards, uh, for a lot of our programs, they pay for all of it. Uh, but like our CDL program for the egg is uh, sixty-three hundred dollars, which is three thousand dollars less than the three proprietary schools that are in the state, they're around nine thousand dollars. So we keep our rates high enough to break even, but low enough to uh, to not price ourselves out. And um, the legislature's been putting more and more money into the advancement grant, Curtis Scholarship Program. If you're a woman, a woman and you want to drive a truck, there's a fifteen hundred dollar grant from the feds. There's, there's a steering wheel with your name on it.
Thank you. That's right up there with driving a school bus.
We we have um, we we, there's, there's a lot of financial resources out there um, that that are available for people who want to, um, you know, it's it's all workforce development related. So um, there, the taxpayers aren't really, I mean, the money for the advancement grant, you know, truth, truth in advertising, the money for the advancement grant comes through the legislature, which comes through your tax dollars anyway. So it's, say that you're not really paying for it. No, you 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 kind of are. But but this is, these are all people that are coming into the program who want to work, who are, most of them are incumbent workers. They're working someplace else and we're helping them get a job that they really want. Like these, these Afghan refugees, when I was speaking with them through their translator, I mean, they don't mind working for CNS Wholesale Grocers, doing what they're doing, forklifts and and all that other stuff. But they really want to drive trucks, and we need truck drivers in the state. So bring them on, you know, uh, and and all of that, all of those people are going to be happy residents coming back to live in in a state. And it goes back to what Joe um, and um, and Al and Norm were talking about earlier. You want to bring people in, I mean, it doesn't get any better than having seventy-five people who want to be in the state of Vermont, working full-time, sending their kids to school, doesn't get any more inclusive than that. And um, there, that's, that's pretty much it, yeah. Yeah, Sean.
Two quick question or comments. One, one is I I've had the opportunity to see the space that Stafford is renting at the Woods, and it's really professional. I think it's, it's a great spot for them, so I'm proud that we can call that a place that where they're learning. Um, and secondly, my question is, um, is there, is there any some, some kind of matrix that you have that, or do we have a measurement where we could say the monitoring three years out, five years out, like when you've done these programs, how many of those people are still around in Vermont? I I don't know how, if that's even possible, but can you, I don't know if there's a survey that you?
Anecdotally, uh, most of the, most of the people are committed, committed Vermonters. I mean, they're, they're here to stay, they've been, they've been lifelong residents or there's, you know, second generation uh, people or people that have moved here from out of state because they love the state. So the vast majority of the people, they're not coming here to get training um, to to go away. They're, they're, they're pretty much committed to the state. What what that number is, I mean, it's, it's really high.
And I think a lot of the employers that are funding, a a lot of the employers that they'll work with, they fund the tuition for their students um, to attend those classes under the condition that they stay employed. Um, so I think that's a huge factor as well.
Definitely something to be proud of and yeah, feel good about the fact that you're building the community.
Community health is is uh, is very generous. Um, forty-five people they put through, their preference is to pay um, their, for their employees out of their training dollars so that they don't have to tap VSAC, and it's what Melissa was saying. And I philosophically, I'm not sure I agree with, uh, we're paying for you to stay, to go to this class, and now you're obligated to stay with us for three years or you have to pay us back as sort of an indentured servant model.
Might be unconstitutional as well.
I just, I just kind of bristle, I bristle at that, but I get it because they're spending their own internal dollars to put these people through the program. And so it's like, why, why would you want to pay for someone to get a job with understanding that, yeah, as soon as I get this, I'm out of here? But it it's just, I understand why they do it. And and most of the people, talking to the HR people at these, like at community health and Casella, most of the people appreciate the fact that the company notices that they're good workers and are willing to invest dollars in their additional training to to upscale them in their organization. So it it's a win-win for everyone. It's, it's the academic, old academic in me that says, I'm not sure I like having them sign a a promissory note that I won't leave. Yeah.
Do you um, I I've, I've worked with um, clients who've gone through Reach Up. Are you guys have a working relationship with?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The um, Cosmo, I, our Cosmo program has uh, three. Our CDL program has, you know, two or three right now, active students involved in the program, and we've got quite a few in our welding program.
Okay.
There's.
So, so if I run into somebody who's interested, should I send them to you or should I send them to Reach Up first?
Um, if if um, if you send them to me, I'm going to send them to our outreach counselor, Mark Lagunita, VSAC.
Okay.
That's for for all these agencies, like Reach Up and Weber and Vermont Department of Labor, their default setting, their control alt delete is VSAC.
Okay.
And if they qualify for that, they don't have to tap their dollars. So, yeah, that, so so they just, they just go into VSAC.
Okay.
And 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 sometimes it's a combination of um, funding between multiple organizations. It's pretty cool, what the way they operate.
And maybe send them to the spa first before they do that.
Okay, there's another here.
He's giving the plug to the spa, so I want to keep the momentum going.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm done. Stephanie, you're up.
So I'm going to give you the synopsis of our linked me meeting last week. We went over the water damage that happened on September twenty-fifth at RIS. Um, thankfully, it, damage was very minimal compared to what it could have been. It's all, for the most part, taken care of and should be the next week or so that um, everything will be back to normal there. We continued our more updating on the Esser Outdoor classrooms. Those are moving along well. We have timelines for various um, various of the projects, but we have a few that are going to be done by December, hopefully. Um, more update on the Esser HVAC. And the biggest thing that we talked about in depth, and I know um, Glenn Scott talked about it last month, but I wanted to kind of bring it up again, is we, I'm going to talk now, is the um, alumni field that we, we had a um, one of the vendors come in this week and another vendor coming in next week to kind of go over their products. But um, looks like we're kind of coming in around seven hundred thousand, which would include goalposts, blinds, um, everything, some start to finish with the new turf. Um, one of the key things to know is that the turf that we currently have is a ten to twelve-year life, and we are at about year fifteen. So we, you know, we're kind of past the life of that and that's, so we as a committee, the budget or the, excuse me, the building committee and the finance committee, we're going to kind of do a joint um, committee meeting next month to kind of talk about this even in depth. So we encourage all board members to meet at that please. Um, and we should hopefully have it, we are looking to, but where is our timeline? Excuse me, we should be voting and um, hopefully have a vote in December to approve the turf with everything. And then next month, I will have a little bit more detail about which product we ended up going with and whatnot. So if anybody has any questions, reach out to Glenn Scott from Village City for the buildings.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, if we have any questions, Glenn can answer some questions or I can have Glenn come up and answer questions about anything. Thank you.
Mary Beth?
Thanks, Kathy. Um, we covered three topics at the last um, finance, finance and strategic planning committee meeting on October third. Uh, the audit update, the strategic plan update and the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget update, all of which has been covered pretty thoroughly tonight by both Ted and um, and Bill. Um, I do think it's worth repeating, though, that the agenda uh, for the next finance committee meeting will have two really important topics, which will be, uh, will have the partner, excuse me, the audit partner in charge from Sullivan Powers. Mr. Rick Brigham is going to come directly and report to the, come and report directly to the budget and strategic planning committee. And so I think it'd be great if if we had some additional attendance uh, at that meeting, it'd be helpful. Uh, and uh, Ted will also give an overview and a, excuse me, another preliminary outlook on fiscal year twenty-five. Again, um, in that committee. Uh, and as Stephanie mentioned, we are looking to um, have some overlap between those two committees uh, that night. Um, where I think building will have most of their meeting and then we'll have kind of a joint meeting. And then uh, budget and strategic planning will carry on with their meeting. So um, maybe explore even a four-thirty start. We'll get back to you with all the final details of that, probably pretty soon we should connect on that and and see what works for for folks. But um, so if you can't stay for the entirety of of both meetings, that will be okay. But we do encourage folks to come and be there for the part of that that overlaps where we'll talk about alumni field and get a little more information on that. Thanks for the notes again, Ted.
Everybody for the policy committee?
Please.
So, policy committee meeting was an interesting meeting. Uh, we had a quite a few people there, uh, but we didn't have enough people to have a quorum, so we couldn't vote on anything. So we didn't have anything included in uh, first viewing from the last meeting because we didn't vote on anything. We had a very lively discussion about the Declaration of Inclusion, which we pushed forward to talking about tonight and then considering next time. Um, so the next meeting is uh, we'll, we'll get back to the uh, the traditional policies on October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, yeah. October seventeenth.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, do we have any unfinished business? Unfinished business, do we have any new business? No new business, uh, okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in, did we get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?